As well as the details that we have to iron out with the city really get ferreted out. And in our application to the city, a lot of those questions are answered. There's a number of different reports and studies that the city also requires that we submit. So in our perspective, even though they are valid concerns that the community has, we're really focused on what this application request is for. And so with that, what I'd like to say is, Mr. Faraday, you had mentioned that there's a, you know, concerns about a fiscal spreadsheet and the quality of the water. What I can say to that is, we've looked at the final conditions of annexation. Somebody's joining. The final conditions of annexation, I think those have evolved over the past several months. This is something that we've been working with the district for quite some time. There's been some technical memos issued that we had discussed in the last hearing. And so when we look at what those improvements might require, and we have some estimates for the fiscal impact, and benefit actually, for the district and for ratepayers. Should this annexation be approved, there are about $2 million worth of improvements to the district's infrastructure that are already required to be made. And I think it's pretty clear to everyone, but the portion of our project that's already in the district, it's not fiscally possible to do all of those improvements if we're spreading it only on that small portion that's already in the district. So bringing this annexation, this remaining ground into the district really helps us spread the cost, pardon me, easy for me to say, across the entire project. And you're able to achieve improvements that would otherwise, should this annexation not go forward, the project would not go forward. And that additional, or that upfront $2 million worth of improvements would be placed on ratepayers like myself. And I work in a lot of different jurisdictions with projects of this size. The conditions of annexation are very common. We are in agreement with those. As I mentioned, we've worked with staff quite diligently on this. But really, there's a lot of infrastructure that gets built when development happens. And we see that in roads, we see that in water lines, we see that in sewer lines, or some of the main three. A lot of times, we see parks as well. And so from a fiscal standpoint, there's some pretty significant improvements that we've been asked as part of these conditions would happen early. And I think that's a benefit to everyone. In terms of water and protection, there's some upgrades. We've got some leakage happening right now. We've got other folks that are developing in the county with septic and wells. And again, having a municipal-grade system like the district has to join on to protects that water quality. And then, so I hope that has answered your question. I also want to just say that in these improvements, oftentimes, you know, folks look at our project and they say, oh, my goodness, there's all these homes that are going to happen. And it's almost like it's going to happen today. This is a 20-year project. And so I just want to remind folks that we are really attempting to work in partnership with the district for a long-term plan of some very significant improvements that are already needed to be made. And that our project will be phased over a 20-year period. And I think you'll see that some of those improvements could also be phased. And that would be a very reasonable and logical way to progress. There's some significant costs upfront. But again, we're not putting all of the load on the system tomorrow. So we have looked at that. And I think earlier today, you may have heard that there's, that we would propose that there would be some phasing to that, that would make it reasonable on both parties. Financially, it spreads the cost burden out, but it's a very manageable and consistent with a lot of the other projects that I've worked on in the past. With that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have. Just looking through my notes here. But thank you.
Thank you. Bill, do you have any comments?
No.
Thank you very much. Okay, so announcement of final terms and conditions?
Yes, excuse me, madam, if I may. So that would be one request that, as you're considering a possible amendment to those terms, would be that we would work with your staff on a phasing plan that would be reasonable. I'm sure your engineer has seen that over the years as well in different projects, planning for that growth. But that would be the only amendment to the conditions for annexation. When we got those, we were in agreement with them, but we wanted to make sure that there was some, there was clarification, so everybody was on the same page as what the expectations were for a logical development plan. Thank you.
Okay. Can everyone hear me? You guys hear me? Okay, I just want to just do a, what's that? I'm the district attorney. So I want to just go through real quick what happened this morning at the regular board meeting. So at the regular board meeting this morning, the district did announce final terms and conditions. Mr. Groves was present for that. Just as a quick overview to bring everyone up to speed, the district board elected to adopt the recommendations of the district manager as contained in the October 1 letter that Ms. Layton was referring to. And they did also add one additional condition that I want to just put out there, since I know folks haven't had a chance, or maybe weren't present for that meeting this morning. And this goes to Ms. Layton's point. There's an additional condition that was added, that execution of a mutually agreeable sewer improvements agreement between the petitioner and the district, setting forth project milestones and dates, must occur prior to district annexation if that is approved. So the talking of milestones and dates and phasing, all of that would be included in that sewer improvements agreement, which would have to be agreed upon, obviously, by the parties before annexation occurs. I do want to just take a second, because I know there's been a lot of confusion about this. And part of that is frankly, just a function of a really, really bad statute that we're all trying to work within. The statutory requirement for the district, should it desire to announce terms and conditions to annexation, is that they do that at or before the public hearing. That has occurred here. They did that this morning. The public hearing is still ongoing. It's a difficult requirement in the sense of the timing of that, when you think about it, is problematic in the sense of, the district is essentially required to announce terms and conditions for annexation before it has made a determination on whether or not it's going to grant annexation. And so when you look at the agenda, you'll see the word "conditional" on there. And I want to be very clear that the terms and conditions, as announced by the board this morning, are conditional. They are conditional on the petition being granted. If the petition is not granted, obviously, those terms and conditions are effectively irrelevant. And I also want to be very clear that no one should read anything into the fact that the district announced final terms and conditions. That doesn't mean they're going to grant the petition, it doesn't mean they're going to deny the petition. It simply means that they essentially have to do that in order to preserve that option in the event that they do grant the petition. And because that decision hasn't been made, they're effectively forced to announce terms and conditions, which may or may not be relevant. So I want to make sure everyone understands that. I know it's convoluted. I'm sorry, okay? I didn't write the statute. It's just a difficult process, the way that's set up. But I want to make sure everyone understands that all of that is essentially conditional on the determination that will be made after the public hearing on the petition itself.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So I think at this point, to the extent the petitioner has any closing remarks or comments that they want to make, that would be, you know.
Thank you, board members. Again, Bonnie Layton, for the record. Again, just really want to thank you for your time, also for legal counsel's clarification on the process. It is kind of a convoluted statute. But really, what we're looking at is, does this annexation make sense in the larger context of the district? And what those impacts could be, both positive and potentially negative? And that's really where we've made a good faith effort to work with your engineer and your district manager to come up with a set of conditions that make sense for a long-term plan in this part of the district. I know we heard testimony last time, the fact that the master, there was some confusion, I think, for the master sewer study that was recently completed, and this parcel was left out. I think your engineer did a great job of clarifying that they felt that it had been studied and maybe overstudied. They were well aware of what needed to happen in this area. And so for those reasons, it was left out because it had already been studied. And there were a couple of other areas that were taken in to look at because they hadn't been studied. And so I had gone through the master sewer plan report and had read that and had wondered myself. So it was really nice to get some clarification from your engineer on that. And again, we've been working with the district, as we've had conversations as early as 2021 on this request. And just really appreciate the thoughtfulness, the comments from the community. This is perhaps one of the last pieces of McCall that's available to develop. We do have a shortage of housing in the community. That's not lost on anyone. As I mentioned, this is one step in our process. There's still a very rigorous city process, I see them over there, for us to go through as well. But again, respectfully, we request the annexation of what we refer to as the Stockton 90 into the district, and we can move forward. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, so moved.
Do I have a second? Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes. Okay. Item number three is board deliberation and discussion on petition for annexation of Do you have a comment for?
I want to go with someone else first. I'm not ready yet.
Do you?
I don't know.
Okay. Bill?
I've got a comment.
Okay.
To reiterate, the sole purpose of this hearing is to consider whether the Stockman 90, which is this parcel outside of the Payette Lakes Water and Sewer District boundary, should be annexed by the district. That's it. Nothing more, nothing less. Now, as a bit of background, which I think we all need to keep reminding ourselves, there are two types of investment that are spent by sewer districts. The first is investment in collection and on treatment of waste systems. The second is investment on storage and disposal of the affluent. Initially, when McCall built its sewer system, and when we built the first part of our sewer system, we concentrated on investment in the collection system. And we didn't invest in the storage and waste disposal part because until 1998, we could dump into the river, which we were doing. In 1998, the Bureau of Reclamation stopped McCall from putting affluent into the North Fork of the Payette. And all the sewer system investment essentially shifted to storage in lagoons and to the disposal of the affluent, which was the J-ditch that you've all heard about, and the farmers' reuse. Now, McCall said at that time that it would build two lagoons. It even received grants to do so. But it only built one. And then in 2017, after the split had been determined between Payette Lakes Water and Sewer District and the Town of McCall, and after a bond had been secured to finance the sewer district. After those two things, McCall took $7 million from the budget of the new sewer district to settle city debt. Now, these two acts, not building the lagoons and taking the money out of the sewer district budget, established what is today's reality and the reason we have to have this hearing. First, lagoon capacity is a limiting factor for the entire system. There's nothing else that any of us who are on the board have to think about except that. That's a dismal existence, if you think about it. Okay, second, the Payette Lakes Water and Sewer District was so underfunded that it could not correct the problems it inherited from the city. We are now completely bonded out. There is no way for us to get a larger bond, or more bonds, or a different colored bond, or anything else. We're through. And so we do not have the money to build a second lagoon, and we do not have the money to acquire land to expand capacity. Now, checking, as I drove in here this morning, and so far as I could see, there's about 14 houses that have been built through Lick Creek Meadows and down the Boulevard, Spring Mountain Boulevard, to Woolley, this summer during the building season. Why are they being able to build, and why do we have to question anybody else coming in and building? It's very simple. Each of those places is built on property that was taxed to pay the bonds that created the affluent storage capacity that we are doling out. Similarly, the 68 acres of land that's inside the sewer district that is proposed for development by Pine Creek Ranch has 270 hookups available that after the infrastructure is completed, they can use that capacity because the developer has paid for it. However, the developer's September memorandum, and then we heard again this morning, has stated that these original 68 acres are not viable for development if the annexation is not approved. The developer's proposal for the Stockman 90 annexation simply shifts the costs of storing its affluent to the property owners of McCall, and thus, the property owners would subsidize the Payette, I'm sorry, the Pine Creek Development. Since the taxpayers of McCall, the property owners, will not enjoy any profits made by the Pine Creek Ranch development, they should not be expected to subsidize any of the affluent disposal costs. That's my comment.
Thank you. Okay. Brian?
No.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. So I want to thank you, thank everyone who shared their thoughts during the public comment process and who attended the public hearing. Your input and involvement are important to us. The board recognizes and understands that the written comment requirement was not ideal, but that is the process required by state law. So thank you to everyone who took the time to comment. I have reviewed and considered the written comments received as they relate to the district and the system, as well as the analysis presented, the public hearing presentations. My thoughts are as follows. The annexation application by Pine Creek Ranch is, in a general sense, a proposal to enter into a business relationship with the district. It is similar in many ways to a joint venture. I've evaluated many of these in the course of my career, and I have a methodology for evaluating business opportunities like this. I look at three topics. What are the features? What are the benefits? And what is the confidence? So by that, the features. So what's the nature of the product or service offered? What features does it have? The benefits really is about what benefits do those features provide to my organization, in this case, the sewer district. And then the third test being the confidence. Is there a high confidence that the other party can deliver the product or service in a timely manner? The quality and performance will be as expected? What is their track record? And will we experience the benefits that are outlined? My evaluation of the project using this methodology based on the information presented during the public hearings. So what product will Pine Creek Ranch provide? At a high level, we were told it is a subdivision with approximately 650 homes to be built, 615 homes over 20 years, although we have heard different numbers at different points in time. A significant portion of those homes will be built on the 90 acres known as the Stockton 90. The petitioner has indicated that it's seeking R4 zoning for the Stockton 90 parcel equating to approximately 363 additional homes added to the district. There were few details provided beyond that. No plat map was shared, and the specifics of each lot and home size were not detailed. The phasing of construction was not addressed, and the scheduling of that phasing. Each new home, once connected, constructed and connected, would provide revenue to the district in the form of connection fees and monthly service fees. Pine Creek Ranch will also provide an expansion of the sewer system within the annexed property boundaries. If annexation is approved, they will be the construction managers and be responsible for the team needed to design, build, and test the piping and equipment to move wastewater from the new homes to the existing district system. After the completion of construction, the testing and new work will be handed over to the district for ongoing operation and maintenance. Additionally, Pine Creek Ranch will contribute to the district by funding the upgrades to the existing system where capacity strengths prevent full flow from the development. These were, these required contributions were outlined in the conditional annexation agreement that we discussed a few minutes ago. The lack of the details provided on this development make it very difficult for me to evaluate the features, the risks, and the impacts to the district on the proposed annexation. Step two on what are the benefits of the product? So the main asserted benefit for the district is financial in the form of connection fees, monthly service fees, and then the infrastructure upgrades. The petitioner presentation correctly pointed out that any business benefits when revenue grows faster than expenses. We all agree with that. They then shared a financial analysis showing their projections of revenue that the district stands to gain from granting the petition for annexation. This analysis was flawed because it failed to account for the time value of money, treated speculative revenue 20 years in the future as having the same benefits as revenues today. It's also a flawed in assuming that all of the lots would have homes built on them within 20 years. In my experience, many lots are purchased for investment purposes or for building someday, and are held for many years without construction. These lots would not generate any additional revenue to the district. There's also uncertainty about the timing of approvals and construction, which are likely to delay the revenue to the district. Because of these flaws, the analysis significantly overstates the actual revenue that the district would receive. An update has since been submitted, which includes a net present value calculation, but it uses an unrealistically low discount rate and does not address the other risks to the revenue stream. Critically, no analysis was shared on the expenses the district will incur from the additional homes. It seems certain that a development of this size will have administrative operating and maintenance costs that will offset some, and perhaps all, of the revenue that we would receive. And then third, do we have high confidence the Pine Creek Ranch will deliver on the product, and will the district receive the benefits? And the Pine Creek Ranch representatives did not really provide any information showing they have the financial, technical, or human resources in place to complete this development in a timely manner. There are significant risks with any land development, and especially one of this size, duration, and the location. By granting the petition, the district will be exposed to much of that risk and may not see the benefits that we would expect. The flaws in the financial analysis are also cause for concern, as they do not reflect well on the quality of work that PCR performs. So my conclusion is that the business proposal is lacking in the details and accuracy necessary for me to do a thorough financial analysis. And in the absence of any accurate evaluation and a high confidence that the district would receive these benefits, I would have to decline the annexation request. So that will be my position. Thank you.
Thank you. My concern in this is, as Bill stated, is the capacity. The master plan shows capacity, but it is for the existing lots in the district already, not for annexation. I was on the board in 2013 when we realized that in doing density variances, we were taking up capacity that was meant for the existing lots, which is why we suspended the variances. In reviewing the summary of the projected sewer revenues given to us by Mr. Groves on September 16th, there were a lot of assumptions made that I disagreed with regarding the revenue and expenditures. I also disagree that this will cost the district nothing. Having 363 homes, we'll need to fire more, we will need to hire more employees, as well as the maintenance, treatment costs, power, et cetera. Lastly, I want to thank everyone who took the time to comment. Comments do matter. They were overwhelmingly against such a large project, with patrons asking how the district will handle this development, whether the district has enough capacity. That's what this comes down to for me, capacity. I'm unwilling to give someone else's capacity away to include this parcel in the district. Thank you.
No. I'm good.
Do you have?
Call for the question.
Oh, okay. So if there are no more comments, I move that we close the public, the board deliberation. Wait a minute.
Make a motion on the petition.
I make a motion on the petition.
So if you're moving to deny, then you can make that motion.
Oh, okay. I'm moving to deny or?
You're moving to deny the petition.
Moving to deny the proposition for annexation.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
So just to clarify, a yes vote is to deny the?
A yes vote is to deny.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes?
And yes.
The motion passes. I move that we adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 [music]
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
So just to clarify, a yes vote is to deny the?
A yes vote is to deny.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes?
And yes.
The motion passes. I move that we adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.